Invocation by a pastor. Yep, if you can go to the microphone back there. Invocation by a pastor. I don't think it's on. Yep, if you can go to the microphone back there.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before now in the name of Lord Jesus Christ. And Father, we pray that as our officials go forth about your city business, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, you would give them knowledge, and we give them understanding. And Father, we just pray, Father, that everything that is done will bring glory to your name. And we just pray a blessing upon your people today in Jesus' name. Heavenly Father, we come before now in the name of Lord Jesus Christ.
Roll call. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, roll call, Mr. Doyen.
Carter. Miller. Pedala. Shramsky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
President.
President, you have a quorum.
Okay, now, is there any amendments to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Miller.
Uh, um, President, uh, two weeks ago, it wasn't last week, we did a discussion on the rec center. And I wanted to bring that up today because there's something important I want to mention.
I wanted to bring up about the rec center. You weren't here the last, and maybe a couple more members. And there's some things I want to add to that that I found out over the last week or so, and I want to discuss it. And just as a discussion today, as of right now, and it won't take me probably five minutes to get my point across. So I'm asking if you can put that in the agenda somewhere within the agenda items. I appreciate it.
Okay. Is there most, oh, was there support? Has been moved and supported. Uh, roll call, any discussion? Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Four yeas, no names.
Okay, all right. Um, any other amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm asking for a point of privilege to have Louise Gates, the GERS Board Actuary, come up and explain to us, uh, the position of the general employees retirement system as it relates to, um, the extension for the actuarial for the $400.
Okay, is that number nine, or is that separate?
No, I would like that to be at the top of the meeting after.
No, 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 no. What I'm, what I'm asking you is, is that in conjunction with number nine? Because we can move number nine up, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to move item number nine along with the special presentation um, after item number two?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
So you want to move, hold on, you want to move nine after two? And you're adding special presentation from Louise Gates?
Yes. Okay, roll call.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Miller.
Yes.
Okay.
Four yeas, one name.
Okay, um, and then I need a motion for add-on for a resolution, uh, for, uh, Hobart Bill Maxie. Um, they had a, they're having a celebration, uh, coming up, um, and so this is the resolution.
I move.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing now, roll call.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
Okay, now, is there any other, um, amendments to the agenda?
Um. Item number three.
Say that again.
I'm looking at three. Deal with it, okay. Good. No, no, sir. Good.
Okay, um, all right, now I need a motion, uh, to approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
Move.
Support.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing now, roll call.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
Okay, which brings us
You never did excuse the absent.
Okay, we need to excuse Councilwoman Shramsky and Councilwoman Pedala.
Move.
Support.
All right, any discussion? Seeing now, roll call.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
Okay, all right, uh, which brings us to, uh, item number one, approval of minutes from November 16th, uh, 2021 study session. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing now, roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
Okay, which brings us to item number two.
Report.
All right, any discussion? Seeing now, roll call.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Five yeas, no names.
Okay, which brings us to the special presentation. Councilwoman Waterman, if you want to introduce.
I would love to, thank you, sir. Uh, good afternoon, colleagues. Um, we're going to have before us Mr. Louise Gates, um, consulting actuary for the retirement, GERS retirement system, to explain, um, the retirement board position as it relates to the extending the $400, $400 into, uh, because we've gotten the final numbers, so.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can, can everyone hear me okay? Well, I, I am pleased to be here today.
For the GERS.
And pleased to have this opportunity to present the results of an actuarial study that we prepared for a trustee member of the general employees retirement system. Uh, again, my name is Louise Gates. I am the actuary for the City of Pontiac General Employees Retirement System. Does everyone have a copy of our November 12th study? It is a four-page document, first page being the
I don't have it. I think I have another copy, Madam Mayor, just one minute.
So the, the purpose of the study is to measure the expected financial impact of a proposed change in pension benefits for members of the general employees retirement system. On page one of the document, we have a disclosure of the actuaries responsible for the work, the date that the calculations were done, which is March 31st, 2021, some of the assumptions used in doing our calculations. And at the bottom of the page, we have a summary of the individuals who were included in the study and in the calculations. And this is the pension plan population as of March 31st, 2021. And for clarity, this is the most recent available valuation date. So the date at which we have census data for everyone covered by the retirement system. On the next page, page two, we have a summary of the results. So at the top of the page, we have a description of the current benefit provisions as well as what's being proposed. As, as council people, I'm sure that you know that currently GERS retirees and their surviving spouses receive a benefit from the system of $400 per month. And the purpose of this benefit is to enable retirees to pay for retiree health insurance, which they lost about 10 years ago. This benefit is such that it has to be approved by council every year. And over the last several years, the council has taken action to extend these payments for one-year periods. Under the proposed provisions, this $400 per month will be paid for the lifetime of each and every retiree and potentially their surviving beneficiaries. So as council people, I'm sure that you're aware that this $400 a month payment currently is scheduled to end once retiree health benefits begin. A retiree health plan, also known as the VIBA, has been established to provide these healthcare benefits to eligible retirees. So once that's up and running, the $400 is scheduled to end. The proposed benefit will extend this $400 a month to all retirees, including those who are receiving retiree healthcare benefits. The cost associated with this proposed benefit change is just under $50 million, and that's shown in the table at the center of page two. So the value of all the benefit obligations of the system as of the measurement date before this benefit proposal is, you know, over $328 million. If this proposal is approved by council, the obligations will increase to over $378 million, resulting in an increase of just under $50 million. And currently, you have assets held within the pension trust that are sufficient to cover the cost of this benefit improvement. And if council takes action to approve this benefit change, the benefit provisions would be included in the final actuarial valuation of the pension plan, which will allow for the pension fund to retain sufficient assets to cover the cost of this benefit improvement. And so the idea is to ensure that assets are available to cover the cost of this benefit improvement before it's granted. And on the final page of the proposal, we have some comments, just disclosure items. And that, that concludes my presentation of the actuarial study. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions. Press him, Carter.
Thank you. Uh, I'm just a little, little shocked, really. I mean, I mean, a third-grade education would tell you right now that if we figured out, and I just did, we got 1,500 retirees and that, and GERS, I believe, give them $400 a month. So that's $6 million right there. That comes up to be exactly $72 million a year from somehow GERS is paying that to these people. And then I overheard what, what you said earlier. You said they receive $400 for their own insurance. And I was pretty sure, and I brought the question up almost six years ago, if they were, if, if the IRS allowed them to use the money for any other revenue other than insurance, I believe it should have been charged back to them as income. Lastly, the fact of doing an actuary that, that allows the city to do it, if the city did, and the city did perform the actuary and paid for it, and if it's a point up, point down, and, and I have never known an actuary to ever pay a loss in a lawsuit, would, would that make the cities subjected to, to, uh, the taxpayers paying additional revenue? That if the actuary happened to be points up or points down off, and, and the actuary just gave a smaller amount, then was actually, would be a future gain in the pension plan?
I'm sorry, sir, could you, uh, repeat the question? I think I have more than one. I want to make sure that I understand your question.
At the moment, I'm, I'm, I'm very sure that, that the $400 right now is paid through GERS, not, not through the city.
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm just saying, we got, and we talking about dependence and things, but without the dependence, we got, I'm just looking at 1,500 retirees, receiving $400 a month, $6 million a year. And I'm just saying that, that $6 million a month, that $72 million a year is coming out of the GERS fund.
No, no, um, let me try to
$6 million a month?
It's not a month.
No, no, so.
Okay, let me stop again. All right, $400 a month times how many retirees?
Well, currently, there are, and it's shown on page one, uh, one, as of March 31st, there were 1,052 retirees.
Okay, so 1,000 at $400 a month, okay, on, on, okay, it's a little smaller number, not much. All right, I'm just saying, so GERS is paying that, so was that accountable in the actuary of the monies that are being allocated for this future date? Because we trying to figure out what it's going to be. And I just want to make sure that the city paid for the actuary, and if the actuary came in low, lowball, if it did, then will the citizens be responsible for any other arrears that might be necessary to make it back home?
Okay, so the, the idea is that currently you have assets held within the trust that are sufficient to provide for the cost of the benefit. And the, uh, the pension fund is expected to be at least 130% funded once the assets are trans, excess assets are transferred out of the pension fund and into this new VIBA. To address your concerns about risk, which I think are valid, the, the objective of the pension board and its consultants are to modify the asset allocation so that the investments of the pension trusts are less risky, uh, therefore reducing the likelihood that there would be, uh, a need for city contributions. So the calculations shown here are expected to be sufficient to provide for this proposed benefit change, assuming that the fund will earn four and a half percent in the future. Nobody can make you, uh, a 100% guarantee that the fund, you know, that the city would have to make contributions in the future. Nobody can do that. What we're trying to do is ensure that the investment risk that the fund is taking on is reduced. And by doing that, it increases the likelihood that the assets held in trust are going to be sufficient to provide for the obligations, and importantly, not involve city contributions to the pension fund.
Okay, it won't be long, Mr. President. Just last thing. Normally, in insurance, and I do insurance, and normally with some actuaries, normally means, uh, three scores and 10, like the Bible. 70 years old and you're gone. And that's what it means.
Oh, I, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what the actuary, yeah, you, you go up to this much, and then afterwards, uh, uh, we don't count it anymore. So I was just wondering, how did the benef, how did the beneficiaries now get tied into this plan?
Uh, that's, that's a good question. So my understanding of the way the plan currently operates is that if a retiree is the only person receiving the $400 per month, upon the retiree's death, the benefit stops. But the way it's currently structured is that if a retiree has a spouse or another beneficiary, and they elected a pension form of payment that provides for a continuation of the pension benefit in the event that the retiree dies first, that the pension benefit continues on to the beneficiary, just like the $400. So that's how the surviving spouse, a potential surviving spouse, is included in the proposal, simply a continuation of current benefit provisions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else have questions? Uh, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I have, uh, an invitation here. Um, Ms. Gates, Representative for the GERS Board, I also represent, uh, the, the, our, the Chair of the GERS Board here, um, Mr. Sheldon Algeon. And I'm happy that what we have, evidence is what, what we recognize that we are, after years of to maintain the permanent health care benefit, we're about right now to have those benefits returned. Where I've, uh, opened enrollment in September 10th, and now giving their enrollment, and we will have, uh, part, uh, to begin, um, healthcare again for the year now. The studies that, uh, Ms. Gates does, as an actuary, for, and she makes a delivery for, is also, uh, part of the recommendation from the administration that $100, this temporary increase, being continued permanently for retirees. How the actuary says, "Three will give it for the year," similar to that, needs to be done. So, uh, as they, uh, one of the things that, uh, Ms. Gates, uh,
Speaking to the microphone, Madam Mayor.
One of the things that Ms. Gates, my mic's going on.
All right, turn it back on. All right, so what I, what I did say was, number one, it's a recognition of the fact that retirees are about to have their healthcare restored. Amazingly wonderful, a result for the city and for the retirees. Number two, I'm happy that there is support for what the administration has recommended. It's also on the agenda today, that that $400 temporary increase that they've been getting be made permanent. Uh, and the actuary study that Ms. Gates did just shows that from at least a GERS point view, there is money in the fund to pay that. What is also needed on the city side, and that's the council's responsibility, is to make sure that that continued payment permanently will not write a blank check, uh, have, have to mean that future administrations, governments have to write a blank check. And that's the responsibility of the GERS, of the city council by state law to do that study. So that remains to be done, because we don't want to, we want to give the retirees that benefit if it's available. But we don't want future generations to have to pay for that unnecessarily.
Thank you.
Uh, and so the, uh,
Hold on, Madam Mayor. I, I opened it up for questions. I thought you were going to have some questions.
These are questions that have come from the audience. May I say one more thing?
No, ma'am, this was not
Before you interrupt me?
Hold on, excuse me, Madam Mayor. If you have a question for the presenter, then, um, please ask
I have a question for the presenter.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Gates, we have in the audience Samantha Copaz, who is the expert, uh, who has followed the, um, the IRS application, because the IRS had to improve this plan. Do you understand the difference that she has from what you have? And the fact that the valuation that you are paid for and responsible for doing only needs to include the benefits as of, or established as of the time of the settlement agreement? And what you had previously said, uh, do you understand, is different than what the expert has? And she's the one that we're going to go by. Do you understand that difference?
Madam Mayor.
No.
Madam Mayor.
No.
Madam Mayor, this is a 12 noon meeting. People have to go to work.
That's my question.
And so if this is something that you're in general support of,
I am.
Why would you be bogging down the meeting while the council has questions?
Just because there was something in this report that she gave that dragged me by.
Hold on, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
You, you, you didn't ask her a question. What you did was say that we have an expert in the audience that has a different study than what she asked.
No, I asked her a question.
No, no, Madam Mayor.
No, you didn't.
I did.
No, you didn't.
No, you didn't.
You did not ask a question, but I'm going to redirect this.
The question was, does she understand the difference between her view and the expert?
I have the floor, Madam Mayor. Uh, so the question that I have, just for the general public first, is, uh, who's all included in the actuarial? Because we know that the $400 were, was only to, uh, the set class that was in the CIPR. This is extended to the hospital and others?
Correct, Mr. President. It's, it's, it should cover, it's expected to cover all members of the general employees retirement system, hospital retirees and former city employees.
Okay, and then my second question, is there a way, uh, to approve this uh, with some kind of clawback for future councils if it dips to a certain level? For example, we know that this is just a forecast of what it's supposed to be and with the limited number of retirees, we should be able to take care of them and their dependence based on the good work that the retirement system has done. But my question is, let's say 15, 20 years from now, it's no longer working. Will future councils be able, uh, to end the benefit? Or are, are, is this, uh, a one-time thing? So if we say yes to the study, this guarantees them that $400 indefinitely with no ability to stop it?
That's, that's an excellent question, Mr. President. I, I think that's probably a legal question. So, you know, my role is to measure the financial impact of the proposed benefit change. And as you're correctly pointing out, it's $400 per month for life for each retiree. Uh, the study that we did was based on the direction that we received, which didn't include any contingencies. So your question is, can council, or does the city have the authority to stop the benefits if they become unaffordable or result maybe in a city contribution in the future? I think that the proposal could be altered to do that. But the proposal, uh, that we valued was based on our understanding of the benefit provisions that we were asked to value. So your, your authority to stop it is more of a legal question, and, and I'm not an attorney, so I don't think I can answer that.
Okay, Councilwoman Waterman.
Um, I just want to thank my colleagues for allowing this presentation to be held. This is, this is something that's unprecedented. But far as I'm concerned, this is a win-win for our retirees, because our retirees will be getting their health insurance, they will be getting their pension, and we're making sure that enough money is still in the, uh, GERS pension fund to take care of the pensioners along with giving them their healthcare. Plus, you had the hospitals, that is a part of the GERS, that would lose that $400. And what we're trying to do is make sure they will continue to receive their $400. So, um, I'm just going to ask my colleagues to, um, to think hard and to move this forward, because I think this is a great, great thing for the City of Pontiac and for our, for our retirees. It, it really is, and I do understand, um, I, I'm going to give the mayor, uh, some credit as it relates to this, but I, I just cannot understand why she would want to, um, derail something that's good, because it's something that's coming now from the GERS Board and the city council. Because she has promoted this, and we are moving forward, we're trying to make sure that everybody will be taken care of.
Okay, Councilwoman Taylor Burks, and then Councilwoman Miller.
Mr. President, I think that
Speak to the microphone, please.
Mr. President, thank you. I think that we have discussed this and gone over this forever. And I am one happy camper that this is finally going to come to a vote. Because I can tell you, coming from General Motors, we wouldn't have waited this long. So, uh, I, I want, I think that we should just go ahead and take the vote. And I am so happy for everybody, because I have been approached several times. And, you know, I thought the lady was going to beat me up. Uh, and I told her, I said, well, I wasn't there when all of this happened. I'm a new person. And, 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 but I understood what she was telling me. She was upset. And, and I, I, I have been upset, because we wouldn't have waited this long. I can guarantee you that. Thank you, Mr. President. Can we take a vote?
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you know, this is personal to me as well, being an employee, working with the city, as well as Waterman on the other end. I am just, I can't, I'm just elated to be one of my last votes on this council because I have fought for years to be here. And Dr. Taylor is very correct. I stood on the other side of that podium and fought for years. Unfortunately, this mayor was there that first four years that we fought to get some of these people in this place. See, I stay with history, and this is very important to me. I see colleagues out there that work with me in the city. It's my pleasure to vote for you to get what you need because you have suffered.
That's right.
I have had colleagues to die with no insurance.
That's right.
I have people that come up to me now and say they're about to lose their homes if we don't hurry up and get this done. I offer to help them to pay their home. These are things that come to me out in the street that, you know, I lived and I'm, it just hurts me and pains me that so many people have died because of this and didn't have to be.
Amen.
And so I feel, I hear what you're saying, Carter, but you know what? The measurement of who you are is when you got somebody down. See, I never needed an insurance. I could have just walked away, but I fought for years to be here to get this insurance for everybody, and it is my pleasure to vote for it. I do think, Waterman, that maybe something needed to be done, maybe down the road, that when we are not here, we're not going to be, no one is going to be up here to know the history of this anymore. And so the next council may say, "Drop them all." You know, we need something that the security says, "If it drops a certain amount, what would happen to us?"
Yes.
And so I think that security needs to be put in there if possible. I don't know legally, we'll see what we can find out, to make sure that everybody's okay.
Well, that's Councilwoman Miller. I think that's something that could be edited in the ordinance.
Right.
We could put that in the ordinance.
In the ordinance to make sure.
I have a copy of what we have now.
Okay.
We can go and have something like that put in the ordinance where if it went a certain amount, that it would stop it. From one thing I did hear, I've always been told that once a benefit starts, you can't take that benefit away.
Okay.
So that's something that I would ask Ms. Gates to get with the consultants and get with our legal mind, and also talk with Mrs. Kamaskis. I'm not going to say, because she's done her part for the city, but if those factions could get together and deal in this ordinance, so we can move this forward because this has been nine years in the making.
Yep.
Nine years, and as I always say, we at the one-yard line, and we trying to get across the goalposts right about now to get this thing, to get this thing done. I just can't tell you, and as I stated before, we're the GERS, police and fire, we can put a resolution before for police and fire to continue to get their $400 stipings until, but I don't think the police and fire is as whole as the GERS is. And so I don't know if theirs would continuously to be permanent, but until all of this is resolved, we can do a resolution stating that they can continue like we did with ours to continue to get the $400. And Louise, would you explain to them too about when we, with police and fire money coming into the VIBA? Can you explain that to my colleagues as well?
Sure. So the proposal that you have before you covers only the general employees' retirement system. So benefit improvements and the assets needed to support those benefit improvements come from the GERS pension trust. So assets held within this trust can only be used to provide for the pension benefits of those covered by this trust, the general employees. And the exception being the amount of money that will be transferred out of this trust into the VIBA pursuant to city council action and the Internal Revenue Code, the IRS approval. So if the police and fire retirees would like to have the $400 continued, a study would have to be done by the police and fire system actuary for review and approval by council pursuant to state law, but the funding cannot come from this pension fund.
Okay.
I have something, Mr. President, if I might. I don't know if the police and fire board has done something to have that come, but if they are, in fact, I know the mayor and finance director serve on that board. If that is in fact something that they want to do, I'm sure that this council would not have any problem moving forward with it, but that has to come, the resolution has to come from police and fire for us to be able to move forward on that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Waterman. One point of clarity, and I'll recognize you in the second attorney, one point of clarity that I would like to see in this if we're going to do it is to make sure that we attach the cost of living to that $400 because when we got here 12 years ago, listen, when we got here 12 years ago, the city employees had the Cadillac of plans, they was playing low prices for prescriptions and everything else, and now we have a certain...
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I understand what you're saying, but that changes the dynamics of this, and the $400 would be, you cannot put a COLA for them to get, they get that with their pension. They get their money pension every year, they get that COLA rate, but not for this $400.
That's why I was going to say, Waterman, we get that every year, so...
Yes, we get that, we get that with our pension. So the $400 is totally something separate, and we cannot put that on...
Go ahead, Attorney Sharp.
No, I was just going to say, I would imagine that's not my area of expertise, but again, this is a valuation. This is a study that's been conducted based off of this figure. So any modification of that would obviously make this not correct.
Okay.
So I couldn't see where you could venture and increase it.
Okay. Attorney Bowser?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Just so I'm clear, so are the items before this body, the resolutions that are in the packet, because I have received the copy of ordinance, is that just for our office's review?
Yes, right now, because I just stated out here that that might be some modification that I just said, Ms. Kapaski, Ms. Gates, and our attorney should be able to sit down and do an amendment because we were stating, how could we do this where if it didn't, if it fell below a certain point, that it would stop? So that would be an amendment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that my paperwork and order and I knew what we're going to be voting on, or what the bodies are going to be voting on. Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to item number nine. Mr. Clerk, if you want to read the resolution?
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes?
As a relate, let me, item number, resolution to request enhancement pension benefit, a supplemental act, what we were asking for is the actuary that came from the GERS, we were asking that that could be used since it's already paid for instead of the city having to come out and pay additional money. But if this body doesn't have a problem with that, because the actuary has already been done, if the city goes out and do another one, they could be doing the one for police and fire, but that's double if they do another actuarial for the same thing that the GERS board, that Ms. Gates has just stood up here and spoke on.
Mr. Chair, the administration presented that. Let me just correct that. The actuary report, state mandated actuary report for this permanent increase, the city's request for an actuary report is a little different than what the GERS board did for exactly the reasons I was trying to point out earlier. The actuary report the city is requesting will also determine the city's liability and ability to pay that in future generations. This is going to go out for the lifetime of the last beneficiary of the last retiree. So the city, by the state mandate, needs to have this actuary report for the same proposition for the 400 permanent increase, and it also, we are asking for one for the police and fire too, which wasn't done as you hear for the, so that's the resolutions that are before you right now, and that we do ask you to approve that so we can move ahead with getting that $400 permanent pension increase, just as we were describing earlier.
Okay. How long is this actuarial that you're requesting going to take, Madam Mayor?
They generally take, Finance Director, we, Finance Director Darian Carrington is the one who works with the various boards to get these, and he can speak to that timing.
Yeah, it, and we, generally, I think we're looking at about a two-week turnaround, maybe less, just depending upon what's being requested, and if any work has been done at the time of the request.
Yes. That would achieve what we're all talking about right here, which would be a win-win for the city.
Counsel.
For the retirees, both police and fire and GERS. And so if we get that started now, we can get that underway, that actuarial study, and get those reports back in time for the council.
Attorney Sharp.
And vote on just the ordinance amendment that they had up and proposing, we're talking about that we all agree on.
Attorney Sharp.
So I think there just needs to be some clarification as to, obviously, there is a distinction between the two. There's a reason why there's a request for yet another actuarial study. So I think somebody should articulate the differences in the two because there's got to be a difference because if it were the same, there wouldn't be a need for another one.
Mr. Carrington, do you want me to do that? We also have Ms. Copass who's here. One of the things in any actual study...
Either one of the financial experts can speak, Madam Mayor. You choose. You choose which one.
Carrington can speak to the assumption that would need to be in this one, the city would recommend, and Mr. Copass is there too, but she's the one that has to make sure this is all compliant with IRS regulations.
Sure. So to the council and through the chair, and hopefully I don't get too technical with the explanation here, but just want to point out some differences, and certainly Sam or Louise, please weigh in as needed. So the proposal that we have presented on the agenda, item number nine, that proposal was designed to study the cost of the enhanced benefit, the permanent benefit. I think the expectation is that that $400 would vary depending upon certain circumstances, essentially giving the ability, the GERS pension system to lower that amount based on if certain triggers were to occur. For example, if the pension fund didn't achieve certain returns, with the thought that we would make sure that we protect the city, namely the general fund, and not having to make contributions out of the general fund if certain financial things did not come to fruition. That's one of the things, one of the differences with the enhanced benefit that's on the agenda today, again, that item number nine. The other important thing, I think, is that the proposal that has been presented by the administration, it would be taking the cost of the benefit after the soon-to-occur transfer of assets from GERS to the new VIBA. I'm not exactly sure how Louise studied that. I believe she gave, she did an analysis on both of those, or maybe she presented it in a way that both of those numbers would be presented, but the benefit that we are proposing, and I think this gets to a legal issue that Attorney Copass has raised to the administration, specifically in terms of the timing of when that benefit would be implemented. And again, the item that we have before council today, agenda item number nine, originally item number nine, it contemplates that being done after the transfer of the assets.
Council President?
Attorney Sharp.
So based off of what I just heard, I think I would be inclined, along with Councilwoman, with what Councilwoman Waterman suggested about a legal opinion because of what I'm hearing is that, again, is there, would there be an ability to have triggers put in place and for variations of payments? And again, I'm under the assumption, again, this is not my area, that once you give a benefit, you can't change it. So I would think that you would need to know, first of all, is that even possible before you even embark on doing it?
The legal opinion can be given to you right now by Samantha Copass, who is the, from Miller Canfield, from the pension department. She's the expert, she is the one who's responsible for making the application to the IRS. She's here and can give you that opinion on whether triggers can be put in, if you allow her to speak. She can answer that question for you.
She can come to the microphone right now, Madam Mayor. The issue is, we need this in writing so we can all be on the same page because what I just heard from Mr. Carrington, who articulated on the city side, which is fine, that's with assumptions after the transfer is made. If it's $50 million all day, it doesn't matter if you, I got you, if it's $50 million already, it doesn't matter if it's after the VIBA or before. So if that's, if the $400 is the same and it's legal to do it, it seems like we could use the actuarial that the GERS has right now in order to do it and not take the assumption of after it's been transferred to the VIBA, if it's the same $50 million. So I'm just trying to figure out legally what that is. Go ahead, Mrs. Kapaski.
Thank you. So the biggest issue is that this $400 permanent increase was not within, provision within the GERS ordinance when it was terminated on March 31. I'm looking at the settlement agreement right now, and it says the city of Panac will terminate the general employees' retirement system pension plan and establish a new GERS plan, which will receive assets equal to 130% of the pension liabilities of the old GERS plan. My point is that the old GERS plan did not have this provision in there, so therefore it cannot be a liability, or should not be a liability of the old GERS plan, and certainly should not be a liability of the old GERS plan without CIPRA weighing in and concurring on that. I think that if we account for it before the transfer of assets occurs, that we are going to have a problem with CIPRA. We may end up back in litigation, and the reason for that is that it will ultimately impact and reduce the amount of money that will be available for the retiree health funding. So I'm not questioning the $50 million and/or any of the assumptions that have been used. I'm questioning one that should be applied to it, and our recommendation is that it be
The question is, do we need this resolution here for this actuarial study to be done?
So with respect to the resolution, Mayor Waterman is correct that the administration's proposal does have triggers with respect to not being able to take a benefit away once it is given. Councilwoman Waterman and Attorney Sharp are absolutely correct. Once that $400 is in there, I think we have a big problem with trying to take it away. However, if the ordinance is drafted to not have it be, you know, definitive $400, then I think that there's legal analysis that would support it being, you know, $400 subject to certain limits based on funding.
So if you need any of that in writing, Samantha Copass has that extensively in writing as she has also had to get this all qualified before the IRS. That process has been going on for a year and a half now. So they're watching this very carefully, and we have to make sure we move exactly as the IRS has allowed this, or otherwise we risk this not being a tax-free benefit to the retiree, or may not be approved at all in terms of the merger. So there's certain things that the IRS, and that's what her expertise is, that's why she's been dealing with them for a year and a half now, and that is why we need to have this, if we want to get this permanent increase, we need to have this resolution pass so we can do that actuarial study with the assumptions needed to protect the city and protect the retirees for the benefit.
Okay. I'm not going to belabor this. Clearly, the attorneys need to get together on this because I just heard Ms. Copass say something differently, that it may not be $400 after they do this study. And so what Councilwoman Waterman and the rest brought before us was to give and continue the $400 for everybody in the retirement system. I have no intention of improving a study that gives them less or has a point where the city doesn't give them the whole $400. And so we need language that speaks to that. If you look at the resolutions that we have, if people can go to the resolutions, the first whereas has $400 supplemental pension, this is from the administration, right? But then it says that the reestablishment of GERS board of trustees are directed to have a study of the supplemental actuarial analysis required for the purpose of a permanent enhanced pension benefit. It doesn't speak to the $400. So I just want to note that if we're voting on any resolution, just to my colleagues.
No, I don't say it. The final ordinance will be voted on by council.
I hear you, but if you don't study it with the intention of giving them the $400, it will not come out correctly, and then we will be voting on the ordinance that has the assumptions that you have made. If you don't tell people this is what I'm looking at, my college roommate is an actuary. This is what he does for a living. Hold on, Madam Mayor.
You're voting on the resolution to get the actuarial ready.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. The council has to give direction on the intention before it starts in order for it to come out with the right outcome. What I'm saying to you is, of course, the ordinance has to speak to the $400, but if we don't give... But if we don't give this particular administration this kind of direction, we are going to end up, and they say, well, the council agreed to this, and it would not be what the council looked at. So, I just wanted to bring to the attention of my colleagues that we need to specify, in whatever resolution that we send, what our intentions are. That's, that's my only point. If the intentions are just to do a study and give them whatever blanket enhancement the pension can cover, that's one thing. If the intention of the council is to give them $400, we need to say that we're giving them $400. That's all I'm saying before we vote on anything.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would suggest that this be reworked and be brought back before us for next week. Getting Ms. Copaski, Ms. Gates, Cynthia Billings, our attorney, and our executive director, Deborah Munson, to sit down this week to get that, bring the correct language in here. You've heard the debates of what we're trying to do to make this whole for our retirees. I have no problem with the, doing a resolution for our police and fire to extend their $400 like we just did for our GERS. But, so, everybody can be clear, because truly, this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing that's being done here, and we want it done correctly. And then it could be brought before our GERS board, so we can move forward to do the transitions of funds.
Okay. Is everybody clear?
Oh, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to make sure, I see the two resolutions, I see GERS on one, and I see the police and fire on the other. They mentioned of CIPRIA. Is CIPRIA included in the GERS?
CIPRIA is with GERS. CIPRIA was the one who did the lawsuit to get the health insurance.
Yes, and I'm familiar, but I'm just looking at the two resolutions we have in front of us. Neither one of them speak to them. Right, so they receive no benefits, I'm assuming, Mr. President?
Yes, they're the ones that's gonna get the health insurance, that fought for us to get the health insurance.
All right, Mr. President, I've just raised a question, and see it speak.
Mr. Chair, just for clarity's sake, in response to Councilman Carter's comment, the CIPRIA is not, you know, they were a party to the litigation, as was pointed out. This is, is between the administration and the retirement system. So, what we're discussing, the request, has to come from the city and to direct the retirement system. So, in that regard, CIPRIA is not directly, it's the retirees individually who have, who, you know, who would be affected and involved. But CIPRIA was a party to the, to the litigation and lawsuits separately, but don't directly have a role in what we're discussing here.
All right, thank you.
Can I get one further point of clarification, though? Is that CIPRIA is a party to the settlement agreement, which says that 130% of the liabilities of the old GERS plan. So, that's the language that's in the settlement agreement, so I just want to emphasize that.
It's in the settlement, it's just not here.
Okay, so between now and next week, the attorneys and every interested party is gonna work on this to have something that's clarified for the council to vote on?
I will be happy to reach out to Ms. Billings Dunn, the GERS attorney, and also CIPRIA's attorney, Alec Gibbs.
Okay, all right, thank you. We're gonna move on to recognition of elected officials? Oh, okay, all right, see no elected officials, all right, that's good. We're gonna move on to discussion of Pyrex, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm trying to be brief, because these are some questions that I want to pose to my colleagues and even the administration. You know, last two weeks ago, we had a discussion relating to the Pyrex Center, Pontiac Recreation Center. And Mark Holland, the deputy mayor, got up and approached, and he said he was over that project, and he didn't get to explain exactly what was going on, because he never could answer the question why we're there in the first place, because we have not authorized them to be so. So, you know, looking through my documents over the weekend, and I'm looking at some things, and I'm thinking to myself, as I'm gonna be doing this on my way out, and doing some house cleaning. So, I'm thinking, with Mark Holland being the deputy mayor, first of all, I looked through my documents, and I looked on the date, I believe it was July 23rd, that the council voted it down for him to be deputy mayor, am I correct? We didn't pass that resolution. So, how is he allowed to stay in office, perform duties of a deputy mayor, and sign documents? Make public appearances, sign, I mean, how is he able to do this? What is the liability for the council for all these actions that's being taken? Maybe the mayor can answer, anyone. How is he able to do this when we voted him down? And it brings into question legal things. Will it affect that when we go into the next administration? How would that work? We are, we are going to leave, all seven of us going to leave. So, where, where are we on this? This, this is, this is bad, you know, had to, because I read my charter, and I'm looking at it, and it doesn't state that, you know, at the, we have 30 days, and if I'm not mistaken, within that 30-day frame, we did vote. He's still here, and on the website, on the city website, it has his name, Deputy Mark Holland. How is he Deputy Mayor Holland when we voted him down? I'm just doing some house cleaning with some things that's been going on since I'd been sitting here, and these are important questions that maybe the mayor, the attorney for the mayor, anyone can answer, how is this? How is he, how is he doing these duties when this council, this body, I have the resolution here on July 23rd, when we voted him not to take that position of deputy mayor?
If the chair recognizes me, I'd be happy to answer your question.
Please.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Miller, it's important that we obey the charter. The charter says that the mayor can appoint a deputy mayor, and as we know by the charter, that any appointment for a department head of the, of any department, including deputy mayor, is an interim until and unless approved by the city council to become active. He is not active, because he's not been approved by the city council, just like the county, the city clerk. Is not a city clerk, he's an interim city clerk, and it's the same kind of principle.
No.
But an interim can still perform the same functions, have the same responsibilities, because that is what an interim allows for, just like the interim city clerk does all the functions, because he is not active. But, in this instance, I have assigned the deputy mayor particularly for the Pyrex. And by Pyrex, I mean the youth millage that was passed by the voters on November 18th for the purpose of providing youth services to the children of Pontiac. That is a very important part of this administration. I'm very happy that we were actually able to have a facility that would be used as a center, which was really the point of the people passing the millage. Unfortunately, the council decided not to purchase the building, although they did set aside money in the budget. They decided not to purchase that particular facility, but we're continuing to use that until the next administration decides how they want to handle the youth millage. That's where the funding is coming from, to pay for all the activities that are being provided by the youth. I think the deputy mayor, interim deputy mayor, it has now something in the mail that will give the brochure for all the activities, and he's going to be able to expand upon the activities that we've been able to provide for the youth of Pontiac, which have been very well received, very well attended, and with a lot of partners, including Sheriff Powell, including charity music, including all the different partners that the city has obtained, to be able to provide those worthwhile activities and engagements for the youth of Pontiac. Counsel President?
Thank you, hold on, Attorney Sharp. Hold on one second, Councilwoman Miller, because I don't want to lose what the mayor just said. The city council went through the youth recreation budget, took out rent, facilities, heating, water, lights, all of those things that were attached to it. Anything, according to the charter, over $10,000 has to be approved by the city council. I would like the mayor to allow Mr. Carrington to explain to this body how we have used the youth recreation millage to fund activities not approved by the city council.
The, Mr. Carrington is not here, so I will answer that.
Well, I'll wait for him to get here, and he's in the hallway right now, so you can bring him in, because he's the finance director of the city.
I will respond.
No, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Mr. President, I think, I think you meant something else, too.
I want to get this one point, and then I'll give you back the floor.
Mr. Carrington will give the respect to the mayor. If the mayor chooses to speak on a topic, Mr. Carrington will not receive the respect.
Okay, so we'll open, we're gonna open it up for public comments, and then I'll adjourn the meeting after that. Oh, yeah, we have to, so we're going, so, okay. Yeah, Attorney Sharp, really quick.
I really just have these two questions that I just, that something was brought to my attention. I don't know whether it's true or not true, so it's definitely directed to the administration. Whether or not the City of Pontiac actually has certification to operate as a youth rec facility, or is it licensed as a daycare facility?
We have the proper licensing to conduct the facilities as they are conducted right now. The authorization comes from the voters of Pontiac.
The voters, oh my God.
From the state of Michigan, that's the question.
The authorization comes from the voters who wanted a millage passed, and that's what the administration is expecting.
And then the second question is, it's been brought to my attention that the ownership of the 825 Golf Drive has changed, and that there is a new owner there. And so, with that, if in fact there is a new owner, again, how would a lease stand if you have new ownership?
So, Mr. President, this is very crucial for this council going out, because we're gonna be caught with a lot of liability, there's a lot of things going over there that is illegal. I'm gonna put it out there, it's illegal. And what I just said, what the mayor didn't answer was, this body voted it down for him, we had 30 days in the charter, and we voted it down within our 30-day timeframe. I have the, I have the resolution here.
No, I, I understand what you're saying.
And so, we got some problems here that need to be addressed and need to be called out. She just said the citizens, the citizen elected us to do the job. And I'm not going down with it.
So, 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 Councilwoman Miller, before he gets here, because the mayor clearly didn't let Mr. Carrington speak to the point of the money. What I'm saying to you is, we've had issues in the past where people have not been confirmed, and the administration has kept them working. My, my, my clear thing right now, though, is, we approved a budget. They are not following the budget, and then they're not letting the finance director of the city explain to me how it's working. The mayor is, in history, the first black optometrist in the City of Pontiac. She is an ophthalmologist, let me get it together. And so, what I'm saying is, having a degree in one subject does not make you an expert in the other. And so, I wanted to hear from the expert in the other. You tried to interrupt and circumvent him for speaking on-
I will have rights to you, or any responsibility.
No, no, why does he, why does he have to write? When we're in front of the general public, who you said the voters approved it. These are all voters sitting in the audience, and they demand to know why the council has been usurped.
Not usurped.
And when I ask the finance director, who should work for the entire City of Pontiac, you tell me that you're gonna allow him to put something in writing, so you can coax and coerce him into why this is happening? Either they're spending $10,000 over budget, or they're not. And if they are, they need to have an explanation from the finance director on how they do that without council approval. It's really simple. This is something that takes three minutes, and for some reason, you have theatrics and other things going on to not allow the finance director of the city to speak to not only the city council, but the citizens of Pontiac on how they're operating with their tax dollars. Because the next council is going to have to not only approve the youth millage and the rate, but in a couple of years, we're gonna have to go back out for a youth millage and have to explain to the voters, the taxpayers, which I'm one of them, on why we're spending this money.
And they're gonna approve it.
And, and what I'm saying to you is, this should be something that we all should be able to agree on. If you're providing programs, that you're sending the brochure out, I don't know where that money comes from, but if you're sending out this stuff, the finance director should be able to speak on how the youth center is operating.
And we don't know, and we are the governing body, and we don't know. It's embarrassing, Mr. President. And like I said, on my four weeks I'm out of here, I'm gonna bring up something every week.
Councilwoman Miller, it's not, it's not-
Citizens gotta know what's going on in this city.
Councilwoman Miller, it's not embarrassing. What it is, is illegal.
It's illegal.
The, the bottom line is, the charter is the governing body of the city.
It's illegal.
Anything that's done outside of the charter is a problem. And so, Mr. Carrington is there, I would, I would love for the administration to allow him to speak, so we can proceed with the rest of this meeting.
Attorney Gibbs is here to address the question of whether it's illegal or not, what she's-
No, 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 Attorney Gibbs is here to address the lease on the building and the other things. I asked a financial question on how you're spending taxpayer dollars without council approval. That's the only thing that I want to hear right now. The, the lease and them operating illegally squatting in the building is a whole separate topic that all stems out of the spending money that you guys have not had approved.
And, Mr. President, don't you think we need an audit of the funds for the money that we have? What do we have in that account? I mean, where are they spending the money from? Where's the money coming from?
So, if we can have Mr. Carrington and Attorney Gibbs.
I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Byerly still owns the property, and he continued to own the property. And I would, the question you raised, Attorney Sharp, about the state licensing, I don't believe it qualifies, the daycare applications of the statute, so if you could just email me, you and I can have a quick communication, and I can understand your question, but I'd be more than happy to answer it.
I, I believe-
There is not a, under the state licensing, there is not such thing as a youth rec license. It's licensed as a-
Certification.
Certification, correct.
There you go.
It has the correct certification for that size and that kind of activity. So, we are fully licensed by the state, that has been renewed, and we follow the mandate set by that particular category that we classified.
I don't know why the finance director is getting coached, instead of just being able to-
I mean, coached, I mean, that's pitiful.
To answer the question.
He's been in and out of the room, so I don't know if he knows what questions being asked of him.
And to, to the council, through the chair, I apologize, I was conversing with the attorney and the actuary on the pension matter, and I didn't catch all the conversation. But it wasn't coaching you, it was just providing an update.
Listen, I'll make it succinct as possible. The mayor just said that youth programings are continuing in the Pyrex building, which have been paid for because of the youth millage and authorized by the voters of Pontiac. The city council went through litigiously and went through this budget and took out all rental and other things that related to youth recreation being in Pyrex and didn't approve it. So, I'm just trying to figure out how you, how the city is spending money, over $10,000, on youth recreation without council approval.
So, let me, let me just state, I understand that that has been a concern during this fiscal year, since, since the 1st of July. And I have specifically made sure that these expenditures are consistent with what the city and the administration is legally able to do and legally not able to do. I have had multiple conversations with our attorneys and made sure I was, again, legally empowered to process any payments, not only for rent, but for, for other things. And specifically had, again, conversations with the, with the attorneys, and made sure that these payments were allowable under what has been approved in that, in the budget for the Youth Recreation Fund.
Okay, let me ask this question a different way. If there is no money for rent, and the city allocates money for rent, against the line item that is part of the budget for youth recreation, there should be a budget amendment brought to the council after it hits $10,000. So, while you were conversing with the attorneys about the legality of youth spending, who were you consulting regarding the charter and the functions of the three branches of government in the city? Because any expenditure over $10,000, according to the charter, which hasn't been amended substantially since 1982, says that the city council, not only is the person of the city, but should approve these expenditures. So, how can an attorney tell you expenditures are appropriate to approve without council being made aware?
And again, the conversations, obviously, would certainly take into consideration, as I, as I know the attorneys, and me personally, I'm aware of the, you know, involvement of the city charter and relevant city ordinances, as well as state law. And so, those were a part of the conversations and the analysis that I think would have been required from a legal standpoint. would have been required from a legal standpoint. And based on those conversations, again, I made sure that, you know, I was comfortable with, with the processing and approval of any payments that came through the Finance Department.
But he still haven't answered the question.
He, he hasn't, but I think he's referred me to Mr. Bosnick, because that's the city law firm. So the question is, how were you allowing the Finance Director to spend inappropriate funds that were not approved by the council?
And Counsel, Counsel President, I, let me just say, I did not have any conversations with Mr. Bosnick. I, I did have conversations with the city attorney, but I, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Bosnick is...
Who's good.
That's, that's, he's, he's city attorney. Go ahead, Mr. Bosnick.
Yeah, Mr. President, I guess I, I would, I would take issue with you characterizing the funds as improperly spent. This is a matter that was not on the agenda, so I can have a response there. You either have someone here to address that at your next meeting, or put something together and write it in.
Okay, I, I, all right, thank you, thank you so much, everybody. We're gonna move on to item number three, Resolution to Approve the Medical Marijuana Commission Rules. Is there a motion?
Move.
It's been moved in support to vote on this item on Taylor Burks. All right, any discussion from council? Seeing none, roll call?
Miller?
No.
Taylor Burks?
No.
Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Uh, zero yays, five nays. So the resolution fails.
Resolution fails, which moves us to item number five, Resolution to Approve a SEMCOG Planning Assistance Program Grant Agreement for Road Diet Study on Auburn Avenue. Is there a motion to vote on this item?
No.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
One yay, um, four nays, so it fails.
Okay. Resolution to schedule a public hearing for community block grant CDBG program year 2022. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to vote on this item?
No, that's, that's number, that's number seven.
Yeah, I'm just requesting a public hearing for the CDBG grant application, which is due on December seventeenth. The public hearing is to let the public speak to the projects, and actually, I'll have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation for, at that time, for the, for the public hearing. But for today, I'm asking that there be a public hearing, a notice, and that on December seventh, we have the, hold the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion to hold a public hearing?
Mr. President, we had asked last, uh, week about in regards to the money for the sidewalks.
That's, that's number eight. Oh, you're talking about, you asked?
Right. Yes.
The, the public hearing is really just to engage public comment. It's not specifically for any project. It's for the public to, you know, voice their opinion.
Yes, but after the public comment, you said the seventeenth is the due date, so whatever comments are made, they're going to be made on the plan that you submit, Ms. Phillips.
Actually, they'll make their comments on December seventh. So I'll provide a presentation, and, and there could be various projects that could be presented at that time. We've actually proposed five in the package today. That's just to, again, have a public notice for people to make comments.
Okay. Uh, Ms., Ms. Phillips, can, can I say this succinctly? I know it's been a long meeting, and it's past my lunchtime, but usually, whatever programs make it to the public hearing, there's very little variation between what the public votes on or talks about and what the council votes on. So usually, we'll have a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting, we'll close the public hearing, council will ask some questions, and then we'll vote on the item. That's usually been the procedure that's happening. So what I, what my colleagues are saying is, they had questions about repurposing the money to sidewalk money, and so that probably needs to be answered before we schedule a public hearing. So if the public makes comments on if we should keep these projects, or should it be on sidewalks, they need to have those opportunities, so then we can vote on it and it doesn't mess up your deadline.
Okay. So in your package, I propose five projects. One project would be all of the funding go to sidewalks, which was a comment made last week. There's four additional projects, which are the childcare, which would be services that we would provide services to daycare centers. And if you, if you're not familiar with, there's three different types. They could be in-home, they could be the group, and they could be a, a full daycare center. But some of the services that would be provided would be to assist those daycare centers and to increase their, their rating. There's a great, it's called great study rating, and that's how they get additional funding for, you know, how they charge for their fees, which were also subsidized by Department of Health and Human Services for people that are at the poverty level. Now, this, this program that we're proposing for childcare services could assist the, the daycare centers in helping the other group of people that are slightly above the poverty level, the, the working population that really can't afford. So what we're proposing, and this, there's a, a spec sheet in your package that, that addresses childcare services, but this is not for the facilities, this is actually a service that would be provided to daycare centers. That's one project. Another project is for the economic development technical assistance to small businesses, and again, this information is in your package. The other project is for a code enforcement staff person that would work both in-house and in the field. And the, and the fourth one is for, for public safety, that would be on cameras throughout the city.
Okay, Attorney Sharp.
And again, these are suggested proposed projects.
That was, was that one added? That crime proof, crime...
Yes, because that was one from last year.
But it wasn't on that last week. The council had been requesting those cameras for quite some time.
Okay. All right, so is there, is there a motion to schedule this public hearing?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item number seven.
Well, let me just say, so there's our seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for community block grants for the city.
So, next week, hopefully, on next Tuesday, we can, we'll vote on this item again, and hopefully, we'll come to some clarity.
Well, let me ask you, what is, you want to see?
Hold on, hold on, Ms., Ms. Phillips, the, the pleasure of the body was not to vote to schedule the public hearing. I'm not here to debate why they chose what they, they did. We're on item number seven now, which is also, you guys, Resolution to consider approval of Vicon Inc. for CDBG batch demolition. Is there a motion to vote on this item?
Or approve.
Is, 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 no. Is there, is there, is there a motion to vote on this item? Okay.
Okay.
Seeing none, that's gonna move us to item number eight, Resolution to Schedule a Public Hearing to Reprogram Housekeeping Services to Sidewalks, Recommendation Project Allocation for Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Year 2019 and '20. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. So it was brought to my attention by Ms. Phillips, the Economic Development Director, that they had modified this resolution, so this money is, maybe she can provide clarification, it wouldn't be going to sidewalks.
It, it would be going to another senior services, for senior services, which would be for safety and repair, to repair homes for seniors, which could include, the documentation is in the package.
Switched it, right? Because last week, it was, it was for the sidewalks completely. It wasn't for the services.
That's correct.
How did you do, I mean, but they don't do that with, from the formal, with the study?
And through the president...
Well, I'm requesting...
That's what, that's what I tried to explain to the administration.
We did have a discussion. I explained that this would be a senior services, another project within that same category.
Ms., Ms. Phillips, it's not a disagreement with what you're proposing. We have a study session, so we can review the information and then vote on it the next week. The study session is to ask the pertinent questions, and then the council can have a week to mull over, get any additional questions, and then vote on the action at the formal meeting. The formal meeting really should just be a formality. What I'm saying to you is, to give us something different from week to week is not consistent with what we've been doing the whole time as a body. So whatever the item is, and if it reads the same, that it's Resolution to Sidewalks, then the council is under the assumption that it's sidewalks, and so they're not going through the package saying, oh, let me look and see this as senior services. So what I'm saying to you is, this is really just administrative function that got changed in the middle of our weeks. And so now, we just need to have the new proposal with a new budget item for the next week's study session to be reprogrammed. But in the future, we don't do that. Whatever happens on the study session should be the same information for the general meeting.
Okay. My apologies for that, because I did speak with interim clerk Doyle regarding that. I, I do would like to, if I could just make one comment...
No, no, we're gonna move on to number nine. We, we, we're at one...
The, the, the public notice for CDBG, there's a timeframe that it has to be posted ten days.
Okay.
And if the public hearing were, were to be on December seventh, that would provide the time to submit the application. If we move it back, we're, we're gonna lose eight hundred thousand dollars of CDBG funding. This will be the first time that we don't submit an application on time, and it's clear that HUD requires, there's no exception.
Okay, we can schedule a special meeting, so we can go through this and get that done, so we won't lose it and, and, and meet within that timeline.
Okay.
But again, I'm gonna push to the point. Stop waiting to the last minute in order to give these recommendations. CDBG happens every year like clockwork. You guys have a schedule with HUD and bringing things to the council with only one opportunity to have a public hearing. So let's say somebody comes up with a great idea that needs some research to be done, it would not fit in that ten day window. That's, that's not a way to operate as a city and as a body, because the application and what you guys have thought of, you guys have thought of years in advance. The deputy mayor used to work on the CDBG application for 2019 and 2016. So this doesn't just come to you by happenstance. The formality of you bringing it to the council with only one ability and no, you, you guys are flying with no wire, right? You, with no net. You just, just said, if we don't approve it at this meeting, what if this meeting got canceled, right? And we didn't approve it? So we were gonna be scheduled to lose this money anyway. We're the only council in the state of Michigan that meets every week. And so for us not to have documents on time that you guys have been preparing and working on for a year, just doesn't make sense to the community. And then everybody comes up with this chicken experiment, saying, oh, the council's gonna cost us money again. Why wait? Why wait? But I'm gonna move on to item number ten.
Can I just ask for clarification? Because when I come back and provide the documentation at the next meeting, so as you said, this, this, for this package, I've added another project in there that wasn't in there the last time. I just want to be clear in terms of what documentation, what information you want to see with regard to the CDBG program.
Mr. President, can I say something? Can I add something?
Please.
Maybe I can make it easy for you, Lynette. Why don't you just make it all sidewalks?
Everything, everything.
It's number five.
Right.
So it is number five in there.
Exactly. She said that was one proposed.
It's number five, so if you guys...
All CDB.
So that's easy.
And, and in the package, it does say, we could do number five, all, there's, it states that all the money can go to sidewalks.
Okay.
If I can, if, now can you vote on it?
No, no.
No.
We're on item number ten, so I, you, you wanted to point the clarity. We're on item number ten, and so I, I'm gonna ask that we defer item number ten...
Playing games.
Eleven, and ten and eleven for a week. Yeah.
All right, okay.
I can speak to it.
Yeah, so we're on item number twelve, Resolution to Authorize the City Clerk to Post a Notice for a Budget Amendment for Fiscal Year 2021-2022 in the Oakland Press to Allocate sixty-three thousand dollars to the General Fund GL Account 101206702000 to fund the Deputy Finance Director position. Is there a motion to vote on this item?
Move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion?
Love to vote.
Seeing none, roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
What was, Taylor Burks?
What?
Vote on item number twelve.
Uh, no.
Okay. Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
You kidding me? No.
That's one yay, four nays, so it fails.
And I also would like to request that we report how that we, how we hired somebody for a position that the council eliminated out of the budget. So maybe that will come with my explanation on how they're spending money that we haven't allocated. Item number thirteen, Resolution to Accept Ninety Thousand Dollar Grant from Next Fifty Initiative to Support Infrastructure Improvement at Pontiac Senior Centers.
Do you want, this is just a summary procedure. We got a ninety thousand dollar grant.
That's a grant.
Okay, we'll, we'll deal with that item next week.
Okay.
Item number fourteen, Resolution to Purchase a Microsoft Office Solution and Associated Costs Not to Exceed Sixty-Six Thousand Nine Hundred and Fifty-Three Dollars.
Yep.
Right, yeah, I understand, so it's not there. So is there a motion to vote on this item?
Support.
Oh, it's gotta be moved.
Move, I'm sorry.
Support it.
All right, any city council discussion?
Nope. We, we good.
Let's vote on it. Let's get it over, we can go home.
Okay, roll call?
Taylor Burks?
What are we on?
Number fourteen.
No.
No. Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, for Microsoft, no, I said no.
One yay, one, one yay, four, four nays, so that fails.
Brings us to item number fifteen, Resolution to Approve a Zoning Map Amendment Request, ZMA 2008 for PIN 64141713005 and 64141713006 to amend the current zoning site, zoning from M1 Light Manufacturing to M1 Light Manufacturing with Conditional Resoning District. Mr. Gustafson?
Yes. We presented this information last week at your study session. This is a facility on vacant land that is on Sheffield Road, just at the south, near the southwest corner of Baldwin and Walton Boulevard. The applicant is requesting, it is currently zoned M1, but we're looking at M1 with conditions to allow it for a medical marijuana grow facility just outside of the Walton Boulevard Overlay District. This is similar to a project that unanimously approved about a year or so ago at the dead end of Richards and New York Street, and it's similar to that type of situation. This is obviously further east.
Our president, Mr. District?
I mean, I and my residents are in total agreement for that, for that land use for that property.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and, Mr., if you could, Mr. Gustafson, if you could provide clarification, I attended I attended a planning commission meeting in October. And I believe this is the same project and I, I thought that the planning permission recommended a growth facility as well as a provisioning.
Uh, no, that was, no, it was strictly just a growth facility. There was some language in the conditional agreement that referenced a provisioning center. And that was removed and that was included in the council pack.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yes, you are correct. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there a move?
You wanna vote on it?
I'll move.
I'll vote.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Waterman?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Four yays, one nay.
All right, item number 16. Resolution to approve a zoning map request ZMA 2109 for PIN 641416126007 to amend the current site zoning C3 Corridor Commercial and R1 One Family Dwelling to R1 One Family Dwelling Zoning District to amend the current site zoning C3 Corridor Commercial and R1 Family Dwelling to C3 Corridor Commercial Zoning District.
And if I can clarify, that, this, we are clearing, we're cleaning house basically in regards to near the intersection of Jocelyn as relates to the Bosnick Auto Center and also JC Park. From the information that was presented in our packet, we're just trying to do a little housekeeping. So at the 007 parcel number is actually JC Park.
Of course.
008 is Bosnick Auto Center. And the parcel line for Bosnick is, in the way the zoning map, zoning map shows, a little bit of residential that is showing inside of the Bosnick Center. And then along JC Park that fronts along Jocelyn, the zoning map shows a little bit of that industrial, or excuse me, C3 located within the JC Park. So we're just trying to clarify that from the boundaries of the Bosnick Auto Center site, it would be entirely zoned C-3. And the JC Park parcel would be all zoned R1, which is what the remaining parcel is. It's just a matter of a little bit of housekeeping on our zoning map that's been in discrepancy for a little bit of time.
Good. Mr. President, Mr. Vernon, I just had a little question for you. I mean, not that I'm a historian, I know a lot about that area.
Okay.
It was Malcolm School. Malcolm?
Okay.
And Malcolm School has a, has a deed restriction on it. And it was no motorized vehicles, nothing could be there but education. Even though I've, I've sit through a lot of things, listened to people talking about going from residential to industrial, but there's a deed restriction and it never, it has never been lifted. So I just wanna, just wanna, just wanna make sure because, yes, I know where 007, I know where JC Park is. I know all my parcel numbers.
Sure.
And I don't understand how it can go this long. I mean, are we cutting it off at the driveway? I mean, I have a copy of the map, I'm looking at it. It's, I just don't understand how the city lost parking, the boss that gave, was it grandfather to us over all these years that we've been using this property, their property? I mean, it's, it's the same as the Eastman, after seven years, I mean, you don't get any right to get your property back. So are we gonna take it back from the public and give it to Mr. Bostic, the new owner?
No, it's not that we're, we're, we're not adjusting the property lines for 007 and also 008. All we're trying to do is our zoning map, if you're looking at the zoning map and you kind of enlarge it, you'll see very clearly that a portion of the Bosnick Auto Center right along Walton, there's a sliver of R-1 located within their property, which is single, one family dwelling. And so for them to expand or improve that site, they wouldn't, that portion of, that portion of their parcel would not be allowed. And so we're just trying to clean house in regards to our zoning map. Has nothing to do with the deed restrictions as relates to those two parcels because we're not adjusting. All we're going off of is the property gateway information.
Yes.
That's, is given to us to show us what we currently have right now for those two parcels compared to our zoning map, which is wrong. And that's where we're just trying to clean house to make those adjustments. Does that make sense? Am I?
It makes a, it makes a, it makes a little bit of sense, Vernon. I mean, we worked together for a long time. I even watched the Marijuana Green Zone with a green pen just extend another 500 feet. So it's, it's easy to see a pin, just, just, just mark it off and eliminate it. That's something planning can do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so what's your recommendation, Pro Tim Kirk?
Well, Vernon, if you, if that's all it's gonna take to fix the parcel 1416126007 and the residents lose none of the, none of the park that's left over from the Malcolm School, then I appreciate it. I could agree with it.
Okay, that's all we're doing. That's all we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is right across from where I live. That's in my district and I live across the street. So I will vote for it.
Thank you.
So if they're gonna do this, then that's where the problem is.
Okay, we need a move and support.
I move.
Need a support. All right, it's been supported. Moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, good. All good.
All right, roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Uh, yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Five yays, no nays.
All right, which brings us to.
Mr. Chairman, have a point of privilege?
Public comment, no, no point, no point of privilege.
I need to leave the meeting.
Yeah, oh, oh, we have Mr. Mr. Maxi.
I need to leave the meeting.
She said she need to leave the meeting.
I need to designate the interim clerk deputy mayor.
You can't, you can't do that.
Gate on both of them. There's a process. A policy, a process. Must be submitted in writing to the clerk's office.
Okay, so we need to.
Come on, let's vote.
We need the resolution from Mr. Maxi. Is there a move and support?
Move.
Support.
All right, roll call.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Taylor Burks? Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Five yays.
Okay, all right, thank you. Which brings us to public comments?
Yes. First up will be Mr. Chuck Johnson.
I'll pass, Mr. Chair, it's late for lunch.
Okay, Pastor Kathy.
I too will pass.
All right, Ms. Billy Swizer.
I heard that, Billy.
That's a Bible verse, right? Don't pass me by.
My name is Billy Swizer and I am a Pontiac City retiree, Pontiac City resident. I am on the super board, I'm on the, thank you, I'm on the GERS board representing all the retirees, not all the retirees for the city, not for police and fire. There were two different ordinance, two different recommendations. One, Jim Mariani, he requested the raise in the $400 permanent enhanced benefit. The mayor has another enhanced benefit program, which she has had for four years since the settlement agreement has been there. And it's been taking four years for her to bring it to council. And she didn't want to pay for the actuary study. The council said, you have to pay for the actuary study out of the mayor's budget, the mayor didn't want to pay for it. So Jim Mariani paid, did his own, asked for $400 permanently. The mayor is conditioned upon how good the GERS system does in making money. If they go above a certain amount, then it's 400. If they go below a certain amount, it's zero. So it's not gonna always be any money. And I don't know that her plan has a date when they identify what, how much the system has made because it's at the end of the year, we know how much the system make. Now you can take each month and say, well, we're at 8%, we're at 7%, we're at 4%. But it's at the end of the year that you determine how much the, the system make. And the consultants can tell us that. But the mayor's plan is not for $400. It's for some amount less than $400. It starts out at three, then it goes down to zero pretty quick. So her, her not, her not being truthful with you and telling you, I don't want you to get any money. That's what she really wants to say. Now, since I'm, I'm on C for two, so yesterday I learned that the VIBA has had 100 people that they have eliminated from the early out, the opt-out rather, the opt-out. Because it's either down to, down to 100 or 175. But there's been a significant drop in people who have opted out. Because spouses, if you weren't a retiree, you could not opt out of insurance. And so the money has changed. But we, you all passed ordinance giving the, for the GERS to give the city $8 million. So that'll, that'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, James, is this Chabas?
This is John Savage.
Savage, sorry.
He like stepped out.
Okay, Veronica? Veronica Taylor? One, two, three, four?
That's it.
That's it.
Good evening, city council and the city of Pontiac. I want you all to know some of our grassroots people here in the city of Pontiac, like Yvette Carson and Renee Beckley have done a marvelous job of keeping this city and keeping people on the ballot. Now I want y'all to know, our own Yvette Carson is very sick now. And she was hit here in the midst of campaigning, where a lady hit her car and messed her, and she can barely walk. Now, I also want you to know, they tested her and found out she don't have pneumonia. She's not sick with, right now she's a little bit sick with COVID, they say, after testing her. But I do want this city to start giving those kind of grassroots women the, the respect that they deserve. Because to carry a ballot around and get signatures for people in the midst of COVID, they do deserve plenty of respect. And I just want to thank this city and this councilman board right now for all the work they've been doing over these years. Thank you and may God bless the city of Pontiac.
Thank you. Mr. President, any public comments?
All right, that brings us to closing comments. Mr. Clerk?
Just that I will be announcing the rankings for the Walton Boulevard District Provisioning Centers tomorrow via Zoom at 10:00 AM. The information is posted on the PontiacCityClerk.com website.
All right, Attorney Sharp?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke?
I have nothing to say but everyone enjoy your Thanksgiving with your families. Have a good one.
Councilwoman Miller?
I'm not gonna be that short, Mike, Mike Billy, I gotta speak today. First of all, I want to first send a shout out to all my supporters. I love you too and I just want them, let them know, I'm not going anywhere. I got a lot of fight left in me. And when I was on the council, I like to look at it this way to all my supporters. I fought for you. In a month, I'll be out there working with you. And if I remember correctly, that's how I got my name, by working out there more dangerous on the other side. And so I'm going back on the other side. Nothing gonna happen in five, the glory don't know. And my supporters, they're there. The fight continues. And I pray that the citizens, you know, they gave, they gave this body a bad, bad rap. They said we, we really argued too much. But I truly believe, God is good. He gonna figure, he gonna show you why we was arguing and how we been fighting for you, reason we was arguing with this administration. A lot of things is, 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 it just, it just not ma- makes sense to me. And I want to give our shout out to Perry Earl, Sean Preston, some of the other young people that ran. Don't give up hope. You know, we as older people always like to tell the young people, you need to take over, you need to take over. And then when they start trying to run, then you pull all kind of habit, you throwing people at them, getting other people to run, to beat them. And then you take their momentum away from them. Hang in there, you gotta fight. They said the old, we too old, well, by the way, I, I got some people older than me in politics. I don't think I'm old. It's, old is all in the head. But as for Sean and Perry Earl out there, you guys keep fighting. The old guard don't want to leave, you gonna have to keep pushing and push them out. And I for one, ain't going nowhere. I'm just getting started. Happy Thanksgiving to all my constituents. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Councilwoman Waterman?
Good evening. No, good afternoon. Good afternoon. I just want to wish my colleagues and their families, along with the employees of the city of Pontiac and the citizens of Pontiac a blessed Thanksgiving. Wish you all the very best. And I just want to say, in my next four weeks or so, you're gonna be hearing some comments from me. But I am very proud to have been able to represent the city of Pontiac in District 1 for 12 years. God bless you all.
All right, thank you. Pro Tim Kirk?
Hello, everyone. I guess I won't change very much, but I, I will say, and today it's been real valid for the public. I mean, a lion would travel around the world before truth gives a chance to put his shoes on. And I will still speak about the, some people don't like the word corruption or Rico and things like that. But I'm sorry, we haven't had our, our books balanced in the last, the last, since 2013. And we've been asking for it over and over again. And maybe it's wrong if I say something like, we use double books, maybe I should say, we got three books, maybe we got four books. But it's more than one book. Whatever, whatever we use, it is not the same book that we talking out. And we just talk about the one little good book that, that, that we get, that we do a budget with, that we trying to follow. With that, I just want to say, everyone, thank you very much. And I appreciate giving out turkeys again, this is 16 years. And we gave, I think we gave out 400 and some turkeys and baskets again and been doing it every year. And we gonna, we gonna continue to do it. And we'll see everybody for the, for the Christmas parade. And Council President, before I forget, we gotta make sure that we get a resolution for our, our Japanese guests who will be coming over. They have been trying to contact, we have been, me and my wife have been in contact with them. They have been making contact, but the phone has been ringing deaf to the, to the prime minister and the governor and a couple of mayors over in Japan, that they haven't been able to get to the city. But we have attended multiple dinners with the Japanese and Canadian consulate during covert and after covert, just, just two months ago, at their gigantic mansion they have over in, over in Cranbrook. With that, Mr. President, I'll just get with you to make a, make a resolution from, from the council of the city of Pontiac that, that we want to thank our Japanese for being 41 years of friends with sister city.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. It's good, I only got about four more times to say that. So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving to my colleagues. I just want to let you guys know that I appreciate y'all from the bottom of my heart. Sometimes I sit at council meeting and it's almost surreal because you hear something from somebody and you say, I forgot about that. That was four years ago that this happened. And then you say it should be sidewalks. But I do want to talk about block grant money. I think one of the programs, and I like the senior services, OSHA was doing a tremendous job with that. And that was an idea that this council came up with and I was happy about that. But I would love to consider doing something for the Pontiac Panthers. Every year I spend about $30 or so buying bottled waters that should cost 20 cents because they're on the corner trying to sell these waters. And they represent our community so well that I think as a city, if we're gonna do a skate park at $180,000, we should be able to do something for our kids, especially the Pontiac Panthers. I would also advocate for the youth assistance, but since I'm on the board, I can't do that. So I would just say, the Pontiac Panthers is a, is a good way to look at it. And maybe something that we could do as a whole that will be a lasting thing to really symbolize that we're behind our community. Last thing is, we have a stuff the bus going at Barbecue Jerry's on Auburn Street. It's every Friday, Saturday and Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. So if you want to stuff that bus, they're gonna do that until December 5th with toys. They have canned goods that they're gonna be actually feeding people this Thanksgiving with. But they're gonna be giving the toys to kids and jackets to kids, so it's gonna be great. Last thing is, we'll be at Nick's on Thursday. So if you want to stop by and you want to deliver food to people who don't have Thanksgiving, let them know. So with that, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at 1:49.